All right. We'll go ahead and reconvene from closed session at 6:36. This time, we have actions taken in closed session being read out by trustee Wright.
First action taken, and the only one, on a six to zero vote with trustee Padver Patterson. Approved an unpaid leave without benefits for six months to a part-time classified employee.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have invocation led by trustee Lang and pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchek.
So bear with me on that. We express our condolences to all of the families, friends, and fellow parishioners who were killed in the AME Church in Charleston. Hate will not prevail, and we look forward to a time when all men and women will be judged not by the color of their skin, their religious affiliation, their sex or sexual orientation. We give thanks for all of our blessings and offer hope for all those less fortunate than ourselves. We express our gratitude to all those who devote their lives to providing those services that we depend on for our safety and security. We ask for wisdom to allow us to make the best decisions, particularly for those who must bear the consequences of our choices. Thank you.
Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have recognitions. We have a resolution from Jacqueline Chastetler. Do you have that?
I certainly do.
Okay.
Jacqueline Chastetler, Hammer Throw State Champion. Whereas Saddleback College student Jacqueline Chastetler captured the California Community College Athletic Association State Championship Title in the Hammer Throw with a throw of 56.98 meters, nearly seven meters better than the runner-up. And whereas Jacqueline Chastetler was named the Orange County Conference Female Athlete of the Year in both 2014 and 2015. And whereas Jacqueline Chastetler is the second Saddleback College Female Track Athlete to capture an individual state title and the first Saddleback College Female in 32 years to earn a state title. And whereas Jacqueline Chastetler was the Orange County Conference Champion in the Hammer Throw, shot put, and disc, and went on to become the Southern California Regional Champion in the Hammer Throw and runner-up in the Discus. And whereas Jacqueline Chastetler posted the top Hammer Throw mark in the nation during her freshman season with a throw of 57.32 meters. And during her sophomore season, posted the top throw in the state of 56.98 meters, which was the second-best mark in the nation. And whereas Jacqueline Chastetler has accepted an athletic scholarship to continue her academic and athletic success at the University of Texas, San Antonio. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend Jacqueline Chastetler for her outstanding athletism and recognize her achievements as the CCCAA Hammer Throw State Champion.
Need our roll call.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchek.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Momon.
Aye.
All right. Would you like to say a few words? No?
Sure, I will. Jacqueline, very proud of you. Saddleback has a longstanding tradition of great athletics, and you definitely fit the mold. Congratulations. You know, quite an accomplishment. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah. I just want to thank Saddleback and all the coaching staff here and everyone at the LRC. I can't, I don't know where I would be without them today, and I just want to really thank Saddleback because I would not be here where I am today without you guys. So, thank you.
I just want to recognize our two coaches real quick. Matt Sherman. Matt Sherman's one of our full-time faculty members and also a great faculty member and coach. And then Sean McGinley. Sean's been here for how many years now, Sean? Five years, and every year, I think he's had a state champion, either the men's or the women's. I mean, I'm talking about nationally acclaimed athletes that move on to SC and stuff. Sean does a super job, and, you know, we're looking for big things with that new throws part coming in, Sean, so let's keep it going, baby. All right. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have public comments. First up, we have Jim Leach. And then on deck, we have Mike Hamilton.
President Prendergast, members of the board, Mr. Chancellor, thank you for allowing me this time to speak to you. I'm Jim Leach, president of Saddleback College Foundation Board of Governors for another eight days. I'm here tonight, first of all, to thank you and the faculty for the support you've given to the foundation during my tenure and, of course, over the years. This past year, I'm proud to report that once again, we ended the year having awarded over 400 students with scholarships amounting to over $700,000. Seven new scholarships were endowed with six more working to reach the $10,000 minimum. Going into the coming year, we will have 80 endowed funds. That's up from 51 in 2010. It's a 64% increase. Overall, more than $150,000 has been added to our scholarship endowment since this time last year, bringing a total of our scholarship endowment to over 2.3 million. At our current payout rate of 5%, we will have at least $116,000 available every year in perpetuity. Compare that to just five years ago, when we had all of $29,000 available from scholarship endowments. It becomes clear why we're proud of the growth and the difference it will make for our students in the years to come. This would not have been possible without your support, but I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the unfailing support of President Todd Burnett and the outstanding leadership and support of Dr. Donald Richtner and his staff. So, to them and to you, I again say thank you. I'm very pleased to introduce you, the next incoming president of the Foundation Board, Mr. Mike Hamilton. He'll be up in a second, but I'm proud to say that Mike and I are personal friends and colleagues, and I'm proud to have recruited him for the board. He's a young retiree from Ernst &amp; Young, and he's given generously of his time and treasure to this foundation, and that generosity of spirit and heart of service has led him to accept this role. Plus, I think he drinks. Just a guess. In the past five years or so, I've been privileged to be on this Foundation Board. I've developed a tremendous affection for the college, the students, the faculty, and the district, and it means a lot to me personally to be able to contribute and encourage the contributions of others. And I will, of course, remain on the board as long as they'll have me and continue to do whatever I can to see this program continue to grow and thrive. Thank you very much.
Next, indeed, we have Mr. Hamilton.
Not sure how one follows that introduction, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. I have been associated with this board for about three years. It has been a wonderful three years. We've got Dr. Don Richtner, his incredible executive director, his great support and great guidance to the members of the board. We've had three previous. Jim Leach has served as our president of the board for three years. Before that, we had Donna Varner, and before that, we had Gary Capata. And as I look back and hear the stories, it's clear that each one of them made a difference. And it's, and I do drink moderately. My doctor always says I should have at least two a week, and I'm happy to only do two a week. But I really am excited about the foundation. It has given me a wonderful chance to connect with the students, to connect with the faculty, connect with the staff. It's a wonderful organization to support. I only wish that more people could have the exposure to the young people and see the opportunity. It would make all of us with little gray hair realize that our future is in good hands, and as a foundation, that really is our job, is to make sure that we make their life getting through school a lot easier, and I look forward to my time as chairman of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of privilege. I'd just like to say a word and give a lot of gratitude to Jim Leach, who did a tremendous job as president of the Saddleback College Foundation for all these years, and we very much appreciate the tremendous contribution that you made to this, to this organization. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have board reports. Start with trustee Milchek.
Okay.
Reminding that you get two minutes.
Two minutes. Oh, my God. Okay. Well, thank you so much, actually, Jim Leach, for all you've done and for recruiting our newest presidents. So, thank you so much for all that. And $700,000, wait, $700,000 is an incredible amount, and between Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, we give out more than $1 million in scholarships to our students every year. So, it should be a big incentive for students to come here, I think. Well, I attended the Saddleback and Irvine Valley College commencements, and they were both were incredible, and this gives you, when you see the students graduating and shake their hands, it really gives all of us a really good opportunity to see how we're changing students' lives. And I have to thank all the people that helped all these students to achieve so much with their lives, all of our faculty, all our administrators, and all of our classified help that really made such a difference in our students' lives. And they're moving on now and with great achievement here, and hopefully, they'll come back, as we told them, to come back and work on our scholarship award ceremony. Speaking of that, I did attend the Irvine Valley College Scholarship Award Ceremony, the Saddleback College Human Services Graduation Ceremony, the Charter 100 Luncheon, where we have all of our CARE students that we raise so much money for every year, and the students were there, the Orange County School Boards Association Fiscal Update Seminar, Geraldine Schuman, the dean of counseling at Saddleback College Retirement Party, and the Irvine Chamber of Commerce meeting where Howard Gilman, the chancellor of Irvine Valley College, I'm sorry, UCI, that other college in Irvine, spoke, and talked about some of our partnerships. It was a good meeting. I also wanted to mention, just really briefly in my 18 seconds that remain, that Saddleback College was recently named as the number-one college in California by schools.com, and that ranking was done by graduation rates and a number of other rankings. Saddleback College is one, number-one, Santa Monica's second, and Cypress is third. Irvine Valley College has the number-one transfer rate in Orange County and the number-two transfer rate in the state. So, we do good work at the college, and I want to thank you all for doing it. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Wright.
A few items. One is I wanted to recognize Saddleback College Biology Professor Carol Street. She was named as the Orange County Community College Professor of the Year for Orange County. She was one of five full-time teachers selected by the Orange County Department of Education, and that's a wonderful honor for her. I also attended both of our college graduations, first at Saddleback College. I just wanted to mention that Dr. Al Majors, Orange County Superintendent of Schools, was a speaker at the Saddleback's commencement, and he talked a little bit about thinking differently and to think deeply. Saddleback College had 2,977 students who completed a degree and 1,367 who completed a certificate. Irvine Valley College held its commencement that evening, or at 5:00 in the afternoon that same Friday outdoors. Their commencement speaker was Dr. Greg Washington, dean of the Henry Samueli School of Engineering at the University of California, Irvine. He gave a wonderful talk. They had 1,320 degrees and 1,262 Certificates of Achievement. On May 27th, I was honored to be able to go and talk at the Laguna Woods TV and brag a little bit about both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, about what was happening. And then also, on the evening of Wednesday, May 27th, I had the honor to attend the celebration. It was a silver celebration honoring Dean Geraldine Koeman for 25 years as dean of counseling services here at Saddleback College. A wonderful award. And she's going to be admitted. She's retired, she will retire this year with 35 years of superb service. Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. I echo my comments of my colleagues, Jim Leach, for the stewardship over the foundation that you've provided over the last three years, and to Don Richtner for his leadership executive director. And Mike, you got to tell us what you're drinking, and obviously sway Jim pretty significantly. But yeah, great, great job to the foundation. And now, you know, Mike, now that the bar has been set higher every year, the expectations are there for you, and I know you'll deliver. I want to thank trustee Prendergast for qualifying for CIF because that allowed me to play a greater role in both commencement ceremonies and take credit for things that he'd normally take credit for. And congratulations to your team for what they did, and it was wonderful to participate in both ceremonies. I think both were very well-done, different and distinct, as they should be, and I was happy to play the, play the role that I did in actually conferring the degrees at the end there. Attended the OCSBA, Orange County School Board Association Fiscal Update. As many of you know, happy days are here again in the Golden State, but let's be mindful, and I think the state budget reflects at least some moderation in overextending themselves with the budget agreement that was settled by the state legislature and the governor. There is some one-time money coming into education, K-12, higher education, and I think there's going to have to be some pretty serious decisions how they're going to spend those funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, echo the sentiments, Mr. Leach, Mr. Hamilton. Congratulations on both ends of the spectrum, and we'll see how things go from here. As for commencement, yes, I'm sorry, I missed it. Just as a quick example of how uninformed some voters are as to how government works, while I was in Fresno for the state championship meet, I had people who I was talking to who found out that I was an elected official on the community college board and were lobbying me to stop the bullet train. So, I'll see what I can do. Anyway, other than that, I was able to represent the district at the Beckman High School graduation as the president of the Board of Trustees for the early college program graduates that went through there a month after they got their AA degrees, they got their high school diplomas. And so, that was, that was nice to be able to represent the district on that behalf. Other than that, trustee Jay.
I also attended the college graduations. Both, they were wonderful. That was my first time, and I was very impressed with both graduations. I also had Todd Burnett had me have a tour of the Saddleback campus, and it was very, very interesting. I also had a tour this last week of the district services on the second floor, and that was so interesting that I asked when my son, who's a graduate of Saddleback, when he comes down for the summer, that I wanted to have him take the same tour of the district services. And then I also attended the Saddleback College Scholarship Ceremony, and I really enjoyed sitting with the recipient of the Dr. William Bill Jay's Memorial Scholarship, which was my husband that passed away. That was really, really special to me.
Trustee Lang.
Thank you. Yes, I already acknowledged Jim Leach, but also want to just express my best wishes to Mike, Mike Hamilton as well. Know you'll also do a great job running the foundation and working with Don in that, in that capacity. I wanted to also, like Jim Wright, acknowledge Geraldine Schuman on her retirement for all the great years that she gave to this district and the tremendous job that she did. Many others mentioned graduation. It's just a really special time of the year, I think, for all of us. That's what this is all about, is seeing our students move on to the next part of their life and with the accomplishment and the skills that we've provided them here. I represented the board at the Saddleback Community College Foundation Golf Tournament. A lot of fun. Tony, good job, and congratulations to you and the rest of your crew for a job well-done. Also attended the Fiscal Update, which I think trustee Jamal mentioned earlier, and obviously, very interesting information, focused more, I think, on K-12 than community colleges, but I think there were some interesting takeaways for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Momon.
I would just like to welcome the new ASIVC and ASG presidents, William Vasquezadez and Adam Tatinji. They're both really solid guys, and I want to congratulate them for winning the elections. I've known both of them for a long time now, and can't think of anybody better for presidents, and I can't wait to work with you guys this year.
Great. Chancellor's report.
The colleges and district services have begun planning for the next round of accreditation. The accreditation process includes a self-study, which will be going on starting in the fall, and then a visit by a team of peers from around the state who come in and take a look at the district, who file a report with the Accreditation Commission, who makes a decision on the accreditation of both of our colleges. One part of this that is changing a little bit this year, the new standards include a much closer look at district services and the Board of Trustees. So, they've come out with a new handbook of accreditation, an accreditation handbook for trustees, and that's been forwarded to trustee members so they can begin to learn more about the process. We plan to keep the board updated on progress the colleges are making and doing their self-study and what the timelines will be, and we're thinking of the first report probably in October.
All right. Thank you very much. College presidents report.
Thank you very much. Well, as was mentioned, we made it through the year-end ceremonies, and scholarships and commencement being just two of those, a whole list was mentioned up here. I just want to thank all of you for participating in those events. It's really important. And now, believe it or not, the students are back again, so it's wonderful to have the campus full. We tonight heard a presentation on ATEP, and contained within that was the first building and for IVC, and I would like to thank the chancellor and the board for all of your support in making that happen. That's going to be very important for both colleges and the economic and workforce development of Orange County. Then finally, and certainly not least, I would like to introduce you to IVC's new executive director of the foundation. I happen to know she is a superstar because she came from Saddleback College, Alisa Oransky. Sorry for stumbling on her name. My daughter's name is Alisa, so I get it wrong, but we're working it out.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Juan Avalos, acting president, sitting in for Todd. Marcia, you mentioned schools.com that ranked us first. We're definitely very proud of that. It ranked us amongst the 112 community colleges in the state. It was an unexpected ranking, but we definitely appreciate any kind of recognition for wonderful work. And I think in part, that reflects a lot of the wonderful work happening district-wide. There was a reference in that article to technology and our role in distance education, so part of that is kudos to our IT department as well. Jim, you mentioned college professor of the year, which, you know, definitely an honor in the area. Not long ago, we were celebrating a state championship in basketball, and then today, we honored another state champion, you know, talking about Saddleback's legacy of quality. Related to that, you know, I wanted to, on behalf of our president and our college community, send our condolences to the family of Dr. Hans Vogel, who passed away recently the age of, the young age of 93. And he was instrumental in the launching of Saddleback College in 1967, so I think in a, in a nice way, we're kind of honoring his memory with the continued legacy of quality. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. ASG, who would like to go first?
So, my apologies, there's a little bit of confusion. Do you want us to present our budgets now, or is that later?
No, this is just on a regular basis at the board meetings. You have the opportunity to present a report on what's been going on the previous month, and then the budget presentation will be a little bit later.
All right. Great. So, then I guess I'll go first. Thanks again, Lamar, for introducing us. My name's William Vasquezadez. I'm the newly-elected president here at Saddleback College, and I'm looking forward to having a good year. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Lamar, for this amazing, for the recognition. My name is Adam Tatinji. I'm the new president at Irvine Valley College for the Associated Student Government, and the past month, I need reports, just been working on building up my Senate members and just getting new members in ASIVC, just making sure everything is operational. So, hope to work with you guys. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And if you have the opportunity at the end, I'd like to meet with you two just briefly about the role and so forth. Thank you. All right. With that, we have no board requests for reports. So, with that, and there's no discussion item. Before we get to the consent calendar, I've been asked to move 6.1 and 6.2 earlier into the agenda. So, we'll start with 6.1, which is the tentative budget report. And following that, we'll have the student government budget reports.
Vice Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons. We're going to keep this report brief tonight because it is the tentative budget. Presenting with me will be Executive Director Kim Accord. And before we start, I want to recognize Vice Presidents Carol Hilton and Vice President Devit Kachatrian. I thought I saw Devit here somewhere. Okay. They did a lot of work on this budget, as well as all their staff in their offices, as well as Kim's staff. It's a lot of coordinated effort between district services and the fiscal offices to really get this done and together in the timeframe that we have to do it in, so I just want to recognize them. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and start. Just to remind everybody that the tentative budget is the draft budget we used just to start out the fiscal year, which begins on July 1st. It's based on the most conservative and accurate information we have at that time. Things have changed since then. The governor, the state has passed a budget. We'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. That'll be incorporated into our adopted budget in August, so we'll fill you in on that. Our fiscal year ends in June 30th, and what we do is we close out the year, so by August, we'll have all that information for ending balances and things like that as well. I wanted to remind everybody what the board philosophy on the budget was. We have this in the budget packet, and we sort of go through this every year. We want to ensure wise and prudent use of public resources, promote financial strength and stability, and maximize educational opportunities for students. We have budget development guidelines on 10 areas that talk about our reserve for economic uncertainties, which is a 7.5% reserve contingency for the board. We have, we talk about our long-term debt issues, our retirement incentives, how we handle those, how the area and college allocations occur, which we have a very decentralized budget as far as allocations go to the colleges and to district services, and those decisions and priority-making is done at those planning committees. We don't allow deficit financing. We have processes in place for GASB 45, OPH test, how we fund our retiree medical benefit liabilities. We have a BPNA R for basic aid and how, and one-time cost savings, how those should be used and shouldn't be used for ongoing expenses. We also have, within the DRAC model, how we handle the FTS and student targets and funding for growth. With that, I'll turn it over to Kim with the numbers.
All right. So, for our general... So for our general fund budget, we have 291.4 million, and that's, of course, made up of our unrestricted, the 257.3, that's our operating budget, and then 34.1 in restricted, which are our grants, contracts, various other restricted funding. And then all of the other funds, including capital outlay, child development, community education, and our retiree trust fund is the 419.8 for a grand total of 711.2 million. So I think it's the largest budget I've seen since I've been here. Some of the assumptions, as Deborah said, this is based on the governor's budget back in January. We did get some information in May, but not in time to incorporate all of them into here, and there's so many changes even between May and June. We still don't even understand how all of them will apply to us, so we'll be learning that in the next few weeks. Based on the SB 361 revenue allocation model, we had a COLA of 1.58%. We now know that's going to be 1.02 for the adopted budget. Growth funding, we had 1.45%. The state budget's going to have 3%, but based on the new funding formula, we expect to get about 2% of that, be allowed to grow 2%. Property taxes have been estimated at a 3% increase. We've been doing 2 in the last few years to be conservative, but the numbers are looking higher, so the county recommended, it was more like 3 to 4, so we went with 3. And enrollment fees are remaining at $46 a unit for the students. Some other assumptions, our reserve for contingency, our 7.5% is 12.5 million. The PERS rate only had a really small increase this year, and we were expecting something larger, so that was nice to see, although we do expect a larger jump going into the next fiscal year. STIRS has their schedule for the next, I think, seven years of increases. It's 10.73%. We expect, again, those to go up quite a bit in the next few years. Unemployment workers' comp stayed the same, very small amounts at 0.05% and 1.8%. Property and liability went up just 50,000, cover increases. Salary increases, we always do the step and column because we know those, but there was no COLA built into anybody's salary because we didn't have a definitive COLA yet, and I think we're still in negotiations as well. Health and welfare, we had estimated 8%, and the last numbers we got towards the end of May is it looks like it's going to be closer to 2%. So we should have some savings there in what we've budgeted so far, which is good news. The categoricals, if we don't have any information, we use 95% of the current year. Prop 30 revenues, 2.8 million is a slight increase over last year based on student enrollments, and those expenses are budgeted for part-time faculty salaries and benefits, so we need to report that to you, and that's one thing we report out to the state every year. So for our basic aid funds, we're anticipating any balance around or estimating 22.9 million. It's kind of a large number. It includes the contingency that we had last year, but also the additional property taxes we're getting in this year beyond what we had originally estimated. And then we also return some funds back to basic aid. Most of this you saw last month when we brought you the proposal for next year, so I'll kind of skim through it quickly. We have 47.8 million in new receipts next year. Those are the excess property taxes. So the total was 70.9 million. We were really diligent with our allocation because we have $1 unallocated. And there was the contingency of 9.5 million, which left 61.3 million to, available to disperse. So I know the, in the center there, it says May 2014. That was really last month, May 2015, that you saw that recommendation for all the capital construction, the renovation projects, scheduled maintenance, all the IT projects. We had, I know a lengthy presentation, so you saw all of those, and you can refer back to that if you need the details. And then our OPEB trust, earlier in the spring, we also had our actuarial study, which said we are adequately funded, and we'll be just putting in our normal costs next year. There's no big surprise of a shortfall of money we need to make up, so that was good news as well. All right. Deborah's going to continue on.
So regarding budget trends, the district-wide personnel costs make up an average about 84.9% of total unrestricted general fund, and that's right about where the ballpark we will want. However, because this includes a significant amount of one-time funds, if you take those one-time funds out of it, we're rarely over 90%. So we really have to be mindful of that number. As we talked about, the additional state COLA and growth have not been adequate to support the increased costs over the last several years. So personnel-related expenses are showing upward trends in costs such as health and welfare, although that was down slightly from prediction that was really good, through some PERS and salaries. We wanted to go over this chart again, and basically, the PERS and STIRS rate and cost increases, just to remind everyone, in the year that we're just completing, our STIRS annual rate was 8.88%, but in next year, we're looking at 10.73. So that's, that's $810,000 increase. And for the PERS rate, it's 171,000 for almost a million dollars increase just in PERS and STIRS for next year. If you look over the next six years, you're looking at about $10 million rate increases. These are rates that aren't estimated anymore. These are actual tables, so we know they're known. So some of our base money and some of our one-time money, we really need to use for this purpose. And so there it is again, 10 million over the next six years. And looking ahead, as we discussed, we will be bringing the adopted budget back to you. The final budget information will be included in there. Primary increases to the adopted budget include one-time funds. There's some money there that has been tagged for student success. We also have money tagged for full-time faculty. We're still trying to get information to determine whether the district will actually get that money, or, and/or whether basic aid districts will be excluded out of that allocation, but still have to do the mandates. So that's more to know. We're trying to get those details over the next week or two. We have still lost purchasing power the last few years, so we feel that we're still behind 2008, 2009, even with this budget, about 15% going back and looking at COLAs. And that's about it. So with that, we want to know if you have any questions, or if you have any more information or want information from any of us, we're here to answer.
Trustee Milchker.
I was just wondering, because we're a basic aid district, how does that affect our growth funding?
Our growth funding? So that's part of the DRAC model. So we have goals that are set in the DRAC model, and then we take that into account when we're doing our allocations to the colleges. It's part of the DRAC model. So it's not paid for by the state.
Oh, I see. Okay. So we don't get the increase by the state. We get the increase, the colleges get the increase from, from the district according to the DRAC.
Property taxes and enrollment fees.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I wondered. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Jamal.
Thank you for your presentation. You've been busy this evening, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
We let the vice presidents off a little bit, but they're going to be presenting at adopted, so just reminding them.
So I just had one overall question. So I'm seeing that, you know, Kim, Ms. McCord, mentioned the largest budget since she's been here, but at the same time, I'm thinking enrollments are flat. So explain this to, to me, this phenomenon.
Well, we are getting a large amount of, or a larger amount of one-time money this year that we hadn't had in the past, but also our capital money is growing. We just allocated another $60 million. Some of those projects take many years, so I think that capital pot is growing. And our retiree trust fund is, of course, growing as it should be, as we put money into it every year. So just every year, they're building up a little bit more. I assume as we finish some of these large capital projects, that fund will, will get back to a smaller amount.
Thank you. And then I had a question on the personnel as a percentage of the overall budget. So you're saying that it's at around 90%. And you said 84.9, but if you factor in some other amounts, we're up at 90%. And is this a level of concern for us to be at that level? And is Saddleback and IVC and district services are roughly similar in terms of the percentage?
It's not anything of concern, but we just want to point out so the number's not misunderstood, that if you took out those one-time funds, we're at 90. Now theoretically, some one-time funds are used for personnel as well. So it's hard to, you know, you can't compare apples to apples. We try to stay around the 80, 85% range for total salaries and benefits. That's a good rule of thumb that's been really provided by the change chancellor's office and basically fiscal other, you know, higher ed entities such as NUCBO. So we're still in that range, but we'll have to watch, we have to do prudent use of our one-time funds is basically what we're saying.
And I want to thank the administration for making the change in describing basic aid funding to, because I think the elimination of the use of the word "one-time," and I appreciate that change because we are, we do have some ongoing expenses under basic aid. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, real quickly. The, I guess the first question I had is you mentioned that this tentative budget was developed before the May revise came out, and that you're in the process of sort of absorbing some of the changes, understanding some of the implications from that. Were you planning on providing us with any information prior to the final budget, or is that when we're really going to understand what the implications are of the, where the budget is at presently?
We can certainly do that. I do a written report every month. I could absolutely, absolutely insert that in the July board report, or we could do another communication.
Yeah, I'd certainly be interested.
Yeah. Once we get some of the details, particularly the full-time faculty money, we really want to understand how it's going to be implemented through the state chancellor's office. Everybody wants to know that because it does have implications for us, but there's other details in some of the other funding as well.
Okay. And then I think going back to the question that trustee Milchker asked earlier, and I don't remember where I saw it now, but I do believe that we did anticipate and fund for some additional enrollment growth at both of the colleges in this budget. And I thought in the past, what we've done is we had funded to the level that we would have gotten from the state if we were not a basic aid district. Is that still the case?
That is correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay. Very good. And then I think the other, only other question that I have is, I noticed when, you know, the pie charts, I think, are very helpful. Appreciate that. And by the way, I think, you know, you do a very good job of putting this budget together. I know it's a lot of work, so appreciate that. But when you broke down the expenditures for the two colleges and the district, one of the things that stood out to me was how much more the supplies and services percentage was for the district relative to the colleges. And I'm just wondering what that, what are the, the more major components of that?
Sure. We took a look at that. It really is a trend that we normally see at district services. We don't have faculty that report to district services, so those costs aren't in there. However, we do have what you consider overhead contracts, those kind of things, basically auditors, maintenance agreements for IT, those kind of things. So you would expect to see those contracts and services in that line, which we have more of a portion of our budget with those kind of things.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more requests to speak, and entertain a motion to approve the tentative budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. No other discussion. Go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous yes vote. One trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Okay. So apparently I needed to hit one more tab on my, on my iPad agenda here. We did have a board request report. It was not from one board member, it was from all of us. So these are requests that comes out of our board's self-study session, which in, in a roundabout way is a result of the, the listening sessions. So we have a request for a board report, which will lead to presentations over the course of the next year, just like we got this year from last year's listening sessions. So it's under the attachment, which is what I missed.
I don't have one.
It's item 3.1.e1.
I got it.
Got it? So we have report on administrative staffing levels at the colleges and district services in comparison to similar multi-college districts.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do. Have a motion and a second. You guys see all the four reports there?
Yeah, I see them now.
All right. We'll go ahead and vote on that item. Have unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. All right. Thank you. Now we'll go to 6.2, the budget reports from associated student bodies.
Hello, everyone. Once again, I'm William, and I'm the president of the student government here at Saddleback College. So good evening, board of trustees and chancellor Portner. I like to begin by thanking President Burnett, although he's not here, and vice presidents Hilton and Avalos, as well as the amazing administrators, faculty, and staff that we hear, we have here at Saddleback College. I'd also like to thank all of you in this room for creating all the amazing opportunities that we have here. I wouldn't be standing before you today if it weren't for everybody's hard work. So let's get into the budget and let's break it down. So without further ado, here's a 2014, 2015 budget. Okay. So the fiscal year is not over. So the budget's still tentative. Many of our values are reflections of last year's budget. However, we do have some projections. For example, we anticipate decreased funding from the cafeteria and the bookstore, and because of that, we're stepping up to the challenge, and we've decided to boost our ASB stamp sales, which are a major source of revenue for the student government. They provide great benefits to students, which I'll give you a little bit more information about in a little bit. Besides this, most of the other figures are relatively unchanged and stable. So moving on, here are a couple of the highlights. I won't go through all of them one by one for you because you've kind of been briefed on them. However, the mid-year allocations have been removed, as you saw on the last slide, and this is because the ASGs of the past realize that those aren't the most efficient types of allocations, and the allocations that are made in a timely manner ahead of time tend to be ones that are used more prudently. And so, and so the mid-year allocations have been removed. The emergency reserve is still the same at 7.5% of the subtotal projected budget, as it has been in the past. And so on the mid-year allocations, again, now we're putting more upfront allocations and allocating to things that are more geared towards student success, things that we've creatively innovated ourselves, such as something we call crunch time. And that's, that's something we do in the LRC, where we bring on more tutors and we provide snacks and coffee for students. And we've had great feedback from that. Again, I'll hit some more points so that you, for that in a little bit, so that you can kind of understand what we're doing. And so with, with those, that being said, here's my favorite part of it, the accomplishments of the past ASG and some of our goals for this year. So the inter-club council and diversity student councils did a great job laying the necessary groundwork to establish a good sense of community for us here. We have an active presence on the campus, numerous integration engagement opportunities, and sometimes that just means, you know, inviting somebody to one of the events on our quad, or just smiling and spreading the simple joy of friendship. And so these councils and committees are doing great and inspiring a lot of people. Last year, ASG did a great job with crunch time. Again, this is where we fund and organize more tutors in the library, as well as snacks and coffee. And students say that it's directly impacting their student success because the tutors aren't spread as thin during finals week. By the way, this is during finals week. So there's more attention being given to students, and they don't have to run off to buy a snack or anything like that, so they can spend more of their time wisely, and they're liking it. So that's just one of the ways that we're trying to create change. The veteran student council also did exemplary work. They held events both on and off campus, bringing the community together, bringing veterans together, integrating everybody together. They truly maximized their potential because they were raising funds, and they just, you know, took ASG and really set a standard. And that ties in directly with what ASG is planning to do. Because now that we have a little bit of decreased funding, we need to become more self-reliant, and that means making more fiscally responsible, more prudent, thought-out decisions, as well as boosting our, sales of our stamps, which create a slew of opportunities for people to get engaged if they, if they do purchase one. And they also provide discounts to local restaurants and other entertainment options. So, and something that sort of ties into this is one of the key goals we have for ASG this year, and that's the opt-out system that we'd like to implement. So many colleges, you have a student activities fee similar to the ones that we have, which is $10. And at numerous colleges, when registering for classes, you have the choice to click a button, it's voluntary, to say, no, I don't want to pay this student. a button, it's voluntary, to say, no, I don't want to pay this student fee. Here at Saddleback College, there's a yes or no option. And the schools that have an opt-out system typically have much more funding. And this translates directly into the impact that the student government can make for student success. We can have more direct, hands-on impact for everyone. So that's something that we definitely look forward to working on. So, we're here to engage people, we're here to represent the student voice and support student success. So, thank you, thank you to our great college district and thank you to the Board of Trustees for supporting our student government programs. And I want to say a special thanks to the student development team we have, which Emily Maynard's here and Audrey DiBattova for providing excellent support. If it weren't for them, we wouldn't be nearly as efficient. They're there for us, so thank you. So I'll be happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Trustee Lang.
Yes, first I wanted to compliment you on doing a fine job of putting together this budget. I know it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Just a couple of suggestions that I thought you might want to consider in terms of presenting for the final budget. I noticed up above in the tentative budget chart, that under revenue, you refer to it as ASB activity sticker sales, and yet down below in the commentary, it talks about Gaucho stamp revenue. So, just a little disconnect there. Secondly, it looks like your Note C on the budget chart is slightly misplaced and probably should go down to clarify the line item for mid-year requests.
Thank you for pointing those out.
Okay, trustee Jamal.
Great presentation. Welcome to your position, congratulations on your position. Just one quick note, you may get a few less than friendly responses using the opt-out system. So just be, I agree, it's probably a better strategy for raising funds, but, you know, just be prepared for that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
Just one quick question. You indicated that your bookstore and cafeteria vending was going down. Is that the bookstore or is that the vending, or both of them together?
Yes, so there's revenue that is brought on from both entities, but they're combined, yeah.
But can you name, was it one or is it all?
It's both. It's going to be decreased.
Do you have a reason why the sales are down?
So, for the bookstore, I mean, again, you know, I'm not overseeing the bookstore, but my assumption is, I think it's competition, online book sales and things of that nature.
Okay. And the cafeteria vending?
I'm not exactly sure on why their sales would be decreased.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We're grilling you here. How do you expect to increase the sticker sales, or the stamps, or whichever one you're going to call them?
Okay, so that's a really important question. So what we're going to be doing is, if we can get the opt-out, that's the primary way. If not, we're going to be putting more activities out. Now, we've bought ping pong tables, which are bringing people together. We have ping pong tournaments, which are engaging people. I even see sometimes faculty and staff playing with the students. But people have been buying stamps to get into those tournaments, to become involved in those things. So there was, during finals week, a stamp that was giving out hot dogs to people, and if you had a stamp, you get in the front of a massive line. So there's a whole bunch of incentives and we plan on being creative and coming up with more of those.
Thank you. Trustee Milczuk.
Okay, sounds like you have some great ideas and thank you for an excellent presentation. A lot of my questions were already answered. I just wanted to mention that, you remember that the student Jacqueline that got the state championship for the Discus Frogs said that the LRC really helped her do well at Saddleback College and that really stood out. And then when you mentioned that you're giving additional funding for crunch time to the LRC, I thought that was really a good way to spend some of your money. Also, the studies have shown that students at a community college or community district that feel involved with campus life tend to be retained at a higher rate. So those are excellent ways also of making sure our students stay in school and do well. So I wanted to thank you and you answered the rest of my questions, so thank you. I mean, the other trustees asked the questions and you already answered them, so thank you.
Student trustee, Jamal.
Yeah, I thought your presentation was great, a really good job. And I agree with trustee Jamal that you might get some harsh feedback with that opt-out, but I really think you should go for it, speaking from your past experience with the budget committee. And knowing all the great things that result from more students having that stamp and being more involved, that's something you should definitely go after. And I want to see that done this year. I really want to see that happen.
All right.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next we have IVC. Oh, do we need to approve them one at a time? Together, okay. 6.2 is a joint item. All right.
Good evening, Linda Fontanella here from Irvine Valley College. I am the vice president for student services. Before I hand it over to Adam to make his presentation, I'd just like to say a few words. I would like to congratulate the students and the staff who supported the associated students of Irvine Valley College this past year. They've done an excellent job. You recall, we did have some transition in our leadership in the student life department, but I think we're beyond that and headed to identifying a new director for the program. Even with that, we had a very stable program and a lot of great activities for our students. I would also, at this time, you've met him once, but introduce Adam Tuhangi, our new associated student of Irvine Valley College, who at this time will present the budget for you.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, everybody. And just once again, yes, my name is Adam Tuhangi. A lot of people can't say my last name, but that's totally fine. I am the new ASIVC president and I would like to thank the board for this great opportunity to present it. So if we can just go ahead and move on right into it. There we go. So just a quick note, our budget this year is very similar to the previous budget for last year, so we had no increase or decrease. It was just an estimated budget of $575,000. And we only had a change of $537 in the beginning fund balance. And also, we did see in the campus life, we did see an increase in support of the student ambassadors program. There was an increase of $3,000 and that is because we increased from students from 15 to 20 this year. And also, for the co-curricular programs, there was a small decrease of $2,000 and that's only because some of the clubs did not ask for the amount of funding they did last year, the prior year. Also, we did have a little bit of extra money allocated, around $2,100, which is because some areas did not make requests for funding, so that enabled us to increase in some areas and new funding for the student clubs. And we also had a slight increase in reserve to 10.1% of total sources of funds. Moving on to, also my favorite part, we did have our, I mean, sorry, that's the one after. We do have our 2015-2016 budget highlights, and this is in detail of what we will be allocating our money towards to. We have, first to begin with, our campus life, which enhances experience in ASIVC to the student life on campus. We did sponsor events such as welcome back days, club day, Fear Fest, the president's cup and the homecoming, cram week and many other events. And additionally, we also did sponsor the student ambassador program, the annual scholarship award ceremony and the commencement. Also, a great vast of our budget goes to the co-curricular programs, which is around $233,000, which we will be discussing a little bit more about in the next slides. Also, we do have $113,837 allocated to the ASIVC operations, which is simply the operational costs. Also, we are proud to say that we have allocated $30,000 to our scholarship funds. And also, we do have $70,500 to our student support. And finally, we have our contingency and mid-year requests, which is around 68,163. And also, just to overview, I forgot to overview, for the student support, it does ASIVC grant funding for student programs that serve all IVC students and promote student success. Additionally, this provides funding for campus events sponsored by departments and student clubs. To move on, we do have our accomplishments from the previous year. We did increase the student life and engagement on campus. As stated before, we had a couple of events such as welcome back days, the club days, Fear Fest and cram week. And we also did support the development of the IVC student ambassador program, which I also stated, which went from a 15 student, from a 15 student to a 20 student increase. Also, we did enhance the operational effectiveness of ASIVC and I would like to thank our previous president so far for this great work. He did conduct a review of the ASIVC committees and commissions, and we also did reduce 60% of positions and reduced committees from 11 to 5. And that was only because it would allow us to operate in a better stance. And we also conducted a review of the ASIVC constitution and bylaws, which we will continue to review throughout the year. We also did actively engage in campus governance and participated in state and national student government dialogue and advocacy. And then to move on, we do have, I would like to go over our next year's goals. We would like to enhance student engagement and participation in student life activities and programs. We would like to also ensure active and consistent participation on all college strategic planning workshops and campus governance. Also, we would like to provide ongoing training and education to enhance the student knowledge about campus safety. And finally, we would like to provide ongoing training and education about the importance of student success and student equity. And then moving on to the co-curricular programs, this is a little bit more of an in-depth of what our co-curricular programs were able to accomplish last year. And I would like to thank our amazing faculty and staff for making this possible and also our amazing students for making this a winning tradition. And ASIVC is happy to be a partner in this winning tradition and we hope to look forward to a brand new year. So that is pretty much it. Thank you for your time and if any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
All right, very good. Trustee Jamal.
Well done, President Tuhangi. I think your presentations stills are going to give the administration a run for its money. Very, very good job. Can you, maybe this question is not for you, and I think I asked it last year and I forgot the answer, about the delta between the budgets, between Saddleback College, the student government at Saddleback College versus the student government at IVC, because there's over a $200,000 difference in the budgets.
At this time, we choose to keep the co-curricular funds that we allocate to our programs in the budget. We have a process that we think has been working very well for our school. The students are very engaged in that. They invite those faculty members who would like to apply for co-curricular funds to come in and make a presentation about how the money will be used. And then they have a discussion and evoke before their allocation. This is something that, we are continuing to look at that, whether or not we would pull that money back into the general fund as a base allocation for the co-curricular programs. But this is something at this time that seems to be working well again for Irvine Valley College.
So the, sorry, maybe I wasn't paying close attention. The difference is, the $200,000 plus difference?
$230,000.
Because you're retaining the co-curricular funds into the budget, the student government budget, whereas Saddleback is not?
That is, that is correct.
Can I ask the vice?
Sure. A number of years back, all of the revenue money that would come through would be managed through ASG, sort of longstanding tradition of doing the various allocations. A few years back, there was a decision made sponsored by, really pretty much led by our ASG government, that wanted that a percentage of that money just go into general fund for a number of the activities that had been historically funded. And what was happening is there were some items that were maybe instructional in nature and students felt uncomfortable making those kinds of decisions. And what we really wanted to do with the ASG budget is use it as an opportunity for students to have discussions about how to best use it for the improvement of student out-of-classroom experience. So separating out those dollars where 60% will go to the general fund, funded in the traditional ways that it was, the 40% then would go for ASG. And the criteria around those dollars are more specifically aligned with direct out-of-classroom experiences for students. So they'd work with the various divisions, divisions have allocations and money would, so they're not handling the entire amount of monies coming in through contract services. That's why there is, at least at Saddleback, over the last several years, they work with and develop with a portion of that, 40% of all the money that comes in. That's sort of been the practice over the last three years.
Trustee Wright.
Just one quick question. I was noticing that your bookstore and cafeteria vending is quite good. It's $410,000.
Yes, we are actually doing very well.
And you're doing much better than in the Saddleback. Congratulations. What do you attribute that to?
We just awarded our bookstore contract this year again to our standing vendor. I think what I contribute that to is that our students are very satisfied with the services that they receive at IVC and they participate, very much so in the cafeteria, as well as we have had great leadership at the bookstore. They're very active, engaged with many of the activities that we have on campus and they do a lot of marketing and they're out on the campus talking to the students. So I think I contribute that to their very active participation on campus.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milczuk.
Yeah, that also was an excellent presentation. I was just going to ask you about the IVC student ambassador program. I know this isn't part of your, the budget, but you support it. Are these students to promote Irvine Valley College outside of Irvine Valley College or are they to work with the students inside of Irvine Valley College? Because I attended a very good presentation at the last in-service about a student mentor program that really was proven to help our students, where students help students. So that's why I'm asking this, thank you.
It's me. I'll talk about this. I'm very proud to talk about the ambassador program. It's a program that I started last year. And based on the RP group's recent study about student engagement, we decided to develop an ambassador program. And the ambassadors, of course, are our representatives of our student body, just like the leaders of our ASIVC program. They go through a 20-hour training leadership program to understand more about the college, meet key individuals on the college. They really do get a very good grasp for the operation. And then their commitment back to the college is that they will participate in many of the activities. If the president sponsors an activity and he would like ambassadors to be there to serve on a panel or be host at the activity, they are always there. We give them polo shirts and jackets so they have a look of unity. They also can, in their annual program, have an annual event. Last year, they decided to do a You Are Amazing Talent Show. Our own Dr. Bob Bermuda was a participant in the talent show. They raised $600 that went for ASIVC scholarships. And so it is a program that really engages and focuses and directs our students and we're very proud of it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Where's the video of that? Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also wanted to compliment you on an excellent presentation of the budget. But the explanation that we got regarding the budget differences made no sense because there's a revenue difference fundamentally related to the fact that there's a different arrangement, I think, on the bookstore sales that, relative to the IVC budget, as opposed to Saddleback, that may also involve the fact that now, you know, we're able to pay for co-curricular programs under the IVC budget as a result of that revenue. But it really goes back to the comment that trustee Wright made about that difference in bookstore revenue. I don't remember what, you know, the contract differences there that results in more, you know, in that generating more money for IVC than Saddleback. Maybe, maybe somebody knows the answer to that question, I don't recall.
And I don't have the details on the differences in the contracts. They are separate contracts. I think even with the cafeteria, we have the exact same vendor.
Right. Yeah, I think it has to do with the bookstore sales, not the cafeteria.
Right. You had another differences between the two contracts and sales.
Thank you for helping with this, yeah. We do have the same vendors for the cafeteria and the bookstore. The difference is that all the revenue generated by the IVC contract goes to the ASG at IVC. Whereas at Saddleback, only a portion of it does. So the 200-some thousand you see at Saddleback is only a portion of the bookstore revenue, not the entire amount. And that was at the request of the students several years ago because they felt that they were taking this money and funding extracurricular activities such as athletics and speech and debate, and getting bogged down in the day-to-day operations of the college, and having the responsibility for that. So when the deans wanted more money, now they come to me and not to ASG. And so that was, the idea was to give more time for leadership activities for ASG.
Thank you. That, that entirely makes sense.
Okay. I would just like to add that the model that Irvine Valley College is using, we feel that our faculty have had a longstanding, great relationship with our ASIVC program, and the students do get very engaged, and I, as I reported before, they do ask the faculty members to come each year when they submit their resource request fund for their allocations, and explain why they are asking for the money, what the money will be used for, and give a detailed explanation. So, slightly different approach to it, but our students are, are wanting to be engaged in allocating those funds out to co-curricular.
If I may, when Saddleback was in the process of changing their arrangements, we had discussions with our faculty and with our students about whether they wanted to pursue the same sorts of changes. And so we did investigate it, and we laid out sort of the scenarios, and both our faculty and our students chose not to change the way we do it at ASI, at, at IVC, and so far we're very satisfied with the way that we're doing it there. So we did, we did investigate, we did pursue the option. We understand the, the merits of what Saddleback has done, but the two colleges are quite different from each other in demeanor and how things are run, and the model that we, that we continue to use at, at IVC seems to work well for us.
I think anybody's questioning that.
All right.
Right, I just wanted to explain that faculty were part of this conversation.
Sure, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tentative student government budgets.
Second.
Of a motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Jamal. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. So with that, we go back to the consent calendar. Do I have any polls on the consent calendar? Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'd like to poll five twelve, five eighteen, and five twenty-seven.
Okay, so I have five one two, five one eight, five two seven for Trustee Lang. Trustee Jamal.
Yes, five point two three and five point three zero.
Five point three zero. So five point two three and five point three zero for Trustee Jamal. Anybody else? I, I will, I will poll five point two and five point five. All right.
Second.
So a motion from Trustee Lang, and a second from Trustee Wright for the balance of the consent calendar. Seeing no further requests to speak or discussion, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student, or one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Okay, so we'll just go in order, I guess. Five point two is mine. I wanted to ask on the, the note here I have is, the first parts of this talk about Spanish one, Spanish two, three, and four. Does that include if they took them in high school? Is that a high school credit toward that process, or do they have to have been taken at, at the colleges? So, in other words, if a high school student takes up through Spanish four at that level, what does that equate to?
Kathy Worley, Vice President for Instruction at Ivy, at Saddleback College, it has to do with credit by exam or having taken the college courses. They just get credit for courses taken in high school, but the student has an option of testing in, and where they're placed, they can get credit by examination in some cases for the courses. They have to be written and approved in the curriculum process as being allowable as credit by examination. The language courses typically are at the first two levels.
Would that then include, you know, like if they take the AP Spanish test, which would give them college credit at a four-year, would that work for them as well at IVC?
Only if they got the passing score that the faculty have set as being acceptable to our course content and having demonstrated the competency.
Great. All right, thank you.
They can also test out of that, but they would not get, or I'm sorry, be allowed to enter the class at a higher standing without having taken one or two in college, but then they would still need to complete sixty units in total to get the degree.
Got you. Okay. All right, I have a motion, and I'll second it.
I have one question.
Oh, and Trustee Melchek.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered, how does this differ from the former Associate AA in, in Spanish for, for transfer degree? Thank you.
One of the large things we had to do was get the units down, and that's why you saw revisions to the curriculum. And we took out the learning center hours and came up with a quarter-unit course that is a, a lab component that students now take online. But it was getting the course units to line up with what the state has said. That's one of the reasons we're having struggles with some of the programs, because the unit values for courses, or courses in a required program, are higher than what the Cal States are willing to accept.
So, so you're saying that we're actually asking for less courses, less credit hours in this particular case than we asked in the past to make them match up?
Right, we're limited to sixty.
Okay.
Where previously you could transfer up to seventy-two units to a CSU. Now CSU looks at that person coming in with that many units as a super junior, and they are expected to complete them at a hundred and twenty units, and they just don't want to go there.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Seeing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Okay, five point five was also myself. Just curious, in the description, it says that we have the option to donate or dispose of. Are these sailboats so bad that we couldn't donate them to someone and have them fix them? Like, are they?
Wondering about that, too.
Can part them out and make one sailboat out of the two? Just seems like if there's a way to give them to somebody, we, we would look into that option.
There was an assessment performed on them, and they're considered not usable, or donateable, even.
Okay.
They're pretty old, actually.
Do you have an enemy you want to give them to? Send them to sea?
Sixty-eight.
I don't know, you know? These, these are Boy Scouts, and be real resourceful of those suckers, I don't know. Or Girl Scouts, for that matter. All right. All right, a motion and a second. Trustee Lang and Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have five point one two. Trustee Lang.
I pulled this item. It concerned me where I saw radioactive waste removal, and wondering about health issues, whether this was a surprise discovery, you know, and things, you know, would, would we have let the original contract to this group if we had known about this problem beforehand? So maybe you can speak to that a little bit.
Okay, sure. So the radioactive material that's under discussion has been stored over at the Mass Science Engineering Building for, well, some of it, since 1968. And as we're moving into the new sciences building, we're really combing through all of the material that's in existence to determine what moves, what stays. This could never move, and in fact, the longer we hold on to it, the more expensive it becomes to dispose of, and so we're considering this the opportune time to, to get rid of it. As far as health considerations are concerned, I'm really not qualified to speak to that. But Dr. Wright might be.
Well, maybe, you know, I'll withdraw mine, because I think part of your question was one I was going to ask, is, did we not know that that was there when we originally awarded the bid? Was this a surprise, or why, why is the increase over what was originally contracted if it's been there since 1968? Is that?
That, that's a fair, a fair amplification of my concerns.
Okay, Trustee Wright.
It's been there since 1968. It's in a lead pig, so it's very safe. And it was used for tracers back in those days when they did some experiments using tracers. I think carbon fourteen was one they used, now the others. I inherited that. We were looking for a contractor to get rid of it. We couldn't find a contractor who'd take it at that time. There, there, it's hard to get rid of radioactive waste.
I would imagine.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, but that still doesn't answer the question. It's, it's not a surprise. Why are we all of a sudden being told it's now going to cost more?
We tried, we tried to get rid, we tried to get rid of it when I was the dean.
Okay.
And we just couldn't find a contractor who'd take it.
So is this the same, like, is this a really old bid from back when he was?
Oh, no.
So that, I think that's what we're trying to get at, is, is how did we go from a bid when we knew it was there to all of a sudden, now it's more?
I think that perhaps the point was pressed when we were discovering the desire to move things over into the new building, and so the existing hazardous materials contractor was, it was requested of them to move it now, as we're moving, not before, when the contract came out. It was known about, but we didn't ask the question at the time.
That's the key answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll move approval. I'll second it.
All right, so we're moving to get rid of the radioactive material. I think that's a good thing.
The mountain in Nevada, I know where it could go.
All right. All of us in favor, or go ahead and vote on the item.
Yuck him out.
Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. All right, next we have five point one eight, which was also Trustee Lang.
Yeah, similar concern on this item, and that was, we, the original contract was 140,000, and now we've increased it by, I think, a third. And just, you know, again, just the concern, you know, why, you know, why the substantial increases, again, unanticipated? Would we have awarded it to this group had we known the extent of the work, et cetera?
Okay, so would we have awarded it to the group had we known the extent of the work? Absolutely. We have a pool that we select our professional services from, and we obtain proposals from everyone that's in the pool. So we've qualified this person as the best value for the district. Now, as to the extended costs on these services, when we start construction, we identify what we believe will be the testing for that period of construction. We're very conservative on it because we're writing a contract on it. It's a not-to-exceed contract, and we don't want the consultant to think that we have deep pockets. But we do know that, especially when it comes to testing and inspection, as we're going through construction, there will probably be unforeseen, and there'll be a need to increase that contract. This is what's happening here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, we had amended this once before, so it was actually 180,000 before this increase. So, just to clarify that, but, and maybe you can help me here, but my understanding when you presented an amazingly great presentation on lease, leaseback and design-build, two of the selling points on both those was there would be less change orders.
Yeah.
Here we are doing change orders now a second time with the same contract.
That's absolutely right. Very perceptive. We have had some challenges, more greater challenges on this project than we had anticipated. The original completion date on the project was March. The new completion date, based on, on extensions that we're requesting this evening, for additional days added to the contract, would have been May. So even with that, we're still delayed on this contract. We believe that perhaps part of that can be attributed to the fact that our design-build contractor, who we, who we have engaged, a reputable contractor, perhaps has applied a commercial building-type mentality to the building of our educational facility, which is a night-and-day difference. In commercial, an inspector will come on site only when the bank is ready to release the money. So once every three months, four months, or whatever. In educational construction, there's an inspector on site every single day, and every single day there's a question about whether or not the quality is to the level that's being requested in the documents. So that came as a bit of a surprise, I believe, to our contractor, which has resulted in the need for us to do a little bit more babysitting than we had anticipated. It hasn't been as wondrous as I had hoped that it would be, and frankly, if I had to make a decision about design-build based on this project, I would say no, not this delivery method again. However, I don't have to make that decision. We've already entered into design-build projects on other projects, and I believe those, truly believe those will be night, a night-and-day difference from this project.
So one, one story does not make the novel. Okay.
Yes, hopefully.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Thank you very much for that. Next poll was five point two three. Trustee Jamal.
Yeah, that was mine. Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, I, we exchanged, well, I, I got your response a little bit late, and I just appreciate your response. Didn't get a chance to read until I got up here to the lectern. This is regarding security services for ATEP, and I, I'm not sure you answered my question wholly, and it was basically, what are we currently paying for security guard services at ATEP? I didn't see that in your response.
Okay, so this, this contractor, G4S, is our current contractor. So what we're currently paying is the same monthly rate, except we hired them and, we basically entered in the contract in April, starting the contract in May, only for two months of the fiscal year, because we're working through the participatory governance process with basic aid. And this is a contract that is part of that ATEP operations item, and we wanted to have that be completed and not have the contract in place, so it's like a done deal prior to the basic aid process.
I see.
So that's why we did a two-month, but it is the same contractor.
Same rate, okay.
We had previous contractors prior to this, and for various reasons, they didn't, they weren't up to par, and we went back out and did a full bid process for this.
Okay, thank you. I move the item.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second from Trustee Jamal and Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Okay, next we have five point two seven. Trustee Lang.
Yes, just a couple of items on this. I, I just want to make certain that the, the storm sewer system part of this, which is about 218,000 of the total contract price, and apparently involves camera work on the part of a subcontractor, is included, I mean, that's not the con, that is the, that includes the subcontractor costs.
Yes, it does.
Related to this item.
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. The second thing that I had was, when I looked at Article 4.1, you've got a reference in the first sentence to an Article 6, which doesn't seem to work, because Article 6 talks about insurance and indemnity, not scope. I think it's maybe 4.4, but I'm not sure.
Catching up with you here.
Okay, it's on page 10 of 21.
Thank you. Oh, first off, in Article 4.1, it says the service is described in this Article 6, and it should say four, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's, and then similarly on Exhibit A, page 15 of 21. Yeah, yeah, so I think that's, and then similarly on Exhibit A, page 15 of 21, in Article 7.2, you've got, it says, "These costs shall be limited to the value of the consultant compensation as..." Oh, maybe that one is, that one may be accurate. I was thinking that that should be 5.1.
No, you're right, you're accurate, it should be 5.1.
Okay.
Good catch.
And then finally, on 8.2, is I under term?
Uh huh.
I think the nine months should be 10 months, if I'm doing my math correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
In addition to that, it's the wrong date, isn't it? July 30th to May 31st, wouldn't it be 2014?
Yeah, you're right. 2015 to 2016.
16, the other one.
Good catch, I didn't even get that one.
Absolutely.
And then the only other thing that I would maybe suggest is on page 20 of 21.
Yes.
Just that, it's, I guess the language is a little loose there. Where the subtotal, the first subtotal you come to is for the infrastructure condition assessment and equipment inventory fees. And then the amount that says allowance really should be storm sewer system assessment allowance. So you might just wanna
I will change that.
think about making those corrections.
I will make those corrections.
As a suggestion.
Thank you.
That's it, that's all I had.
Appreciate that.
Okay, and then we had one public comment on this item from Quinlan Rakin. Oh, okay, well, thank you. Seeing no more requests to speak then, I'll entertain a motion. A motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. And that leaves us with 5.30, trustee Jamal.
Yes, so this is another item, vice chancellor Fitzsimmons, that I got a response from you a little bit late. And it's regarding real estate advisory services at ATEP. And I appreciate your response. Just, I just wanna get a sense of the scope of this arrangement. I think the amount is $35,000, $35,390. Now, what type of services and what's the scope of this arrangement with the real estate firm? What are they doing, actually, at ATEP for us? And I assume this doesn't include commissions, this is a consulting fee?
Yes, let me find it so I can make sure that I can read into the record which one you're referring to.
So it's 193309. And it says, "Real Estate Advisory Services for ATEP."
Yes.
So it's just a, go ahead.
That's Alvarez and Marcel, so I think you've meant the consultant that works under this company, Greg Goddard. What he does is he provides, particularly on the financial piece of the real estate transaction. So, for instance, last year, when we did the transaction with the city of Tustin, helped us on the financial piece, worked on comps, helped us work out the structure. As we move forward on ground leases, that's really important consulting to have. None of us are real estate experts, we know a lot about things, but it's good to have someone who does this as a living, very, very reputable person. And so that's what his contract is.
So how much is the contract? I mean, you, this is, this is a portion of it, I assume?
No, this is, yes. That was for past payment for some work done on ATEP, as well as done on the promenade property.
Promenade.
Yes. So contract is hourly rate.
So it's an ongoing contract we have with him?
Yes, it is. And we haven't had to pay him very much. This is actually, represents quite a few months of payment. Over a course of a month, like, I signed a bill today for like $1,000.
Okay.
So it's not, you know.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve 5.3.
Second.
Motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Jamal. Go ahead and vote on the item. Trustee Lang. I guess, just go without it, you still have the quorum. All right, yeah, go ahead and close it, if you can, or do we have to redo it? All right, revote. Okay, unanimous yes vote, two trustees absent, one student advisory yes vote. All right, thank you. All right, so next we move to 6.3, Saddleback College Technology and Applied Science Building Swing Space Project.
No changes to this item?
No changes to the item, okay. Seeing no requests to speak on the item, we'll go ahead and vote. Trustee Lang is returned. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, student advisory yes vote. 6.4, Saddleback College Technology and Applied Science Swing Space Project, change order number one.
No changes. This is for a changeover order of 102,000.
Seeing no request to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.5, Saddleback College Photo, Radio, Television Renovation Project, change order number one.
$39,000 increase to the contract with 67 additional days on this project.
Okay. A motion to approve in a second. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Irvine Valley College Dean, Social and Behavioral Sciences and Reorganization of Liberal Arts.
6.6?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just skipped 6.6, sorry. They look the same. All right, yeah, 6.6. And I got a motion from trustee Lang.
Second.
Second from trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Irvine Valley College Dean, Social and Behavioral Sciences, Reorganization of Liberal Arts. Have a motion from trustee Jamal. Second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Have unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.8, Irvine Valley College renaming the A400 building.
Second.
Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Didn't wanna name it after one of us, okay. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.9, Irvine Valley College A400 Design Build Project, board change order number four.
Increase of 57,000 with revised contract total 9.2 million, extending project duration 49 days.
Okay. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Won't bother to ask Brandy about the change order on a design-build again. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.10, Authorization of Payment to trustee absent from board meeting. Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.11, Contract with, for Software Development, Nudessic.
No changes.
Know your name. Motion from trustee Lang. Second from trustee Jay. See no requests to speak, vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.12, Contracts with Blackboard.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Lang. No requests to speak, vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.13, ATEP Utilities and Infrastructure Project, Phase 1.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Milczek. I think we had lots of discussion on ATEP today. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.14, Approved Fiscal Year 2017-18 Five-Year Plan Revision.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milczek, second from trustee Jamal. Request to speak from trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm, I have no problem with most of this motion, although I did wanna modify the recommendation to eliminate priority number 17 from the five-year plan and accept the other changes to the plan.
Campus building or district relocation?
District.
You made a motion.
Yes.
I seconded.
But the original motion was already made, and then he requested to speak. So he's amending the, you're moving to amend the motion.
I'm moving to amend the motion.
So maker of the original motion, do you consider that a friendly amendment?
Is that me?
I believe it was.
Yes, yes, I do, yes, I do.
Seconder? Who was the seconder?
I seconded.
And you consider it friendly as well?
Sure.
All right. No, no need to vote on the amendment, it'll be folded into the original motion.
Do you wanna explain it at all, or just move it as is?
Well, it's the, it's the item about district services.
Purposes of the public to know what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, in case there's any other comments that anybody would like to make
Okay.
besides the board.
Anyone?
Just for the record, number 17 is District Services Relocation. That wasn't considered as part of the realignment for this June agenda, even though we know the board had concerns. The question of the District Services Relocation was not readdressed during the review for submittal for the state chancellor's office, because it was priority 17, and it was below the two projects that are being submitted as the final project plans for funding requests 10 and 12, and therefore had no impact on issue of state funding considerations. The board's position is duly noted, and we'll certainly bring it back to the colleges and to the capital improvement committee for their consideration as well.
Yeah, and I got your response, that's why, I appreciated that, thank you.
Okay, so the motion for vote is to approve the five-year plan omitting number 17, District Services Relocation. Student trustee Momon.
Yeah, I noticed that the student services renovation is pretty low on this list. And I think that we should make it a higher priority. And I feel like that's one of the reasons why our sales are falling for like the bookstore and the cafeteria. The building's kinda becoming outdated, and the whole place is like, students don't wanna go to it as much anymore. It's not becoming much of a student center.
Okay, you wanna comment on that? The priority listing of the
Which one are we talking, the Gateway Building?
The student services.
The student services building.
Number 20.
It's down on number 20 on the list.
Could I just explain one second?
Sure.
Student services renovation is a different project than the Gateway Building. The Gateway Building is actually the project that you're discussing, and is higher on the list.
Oh, is that the new student services building?
Yes.
Okay. So then what is the student services renovation? Is that, if we're, is that like current, like?
When the Gateway Building is done and programs move over, then it's renovating, renovating the vacated space to accommodate new programs.
Okay.
Did that help?
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right, trustee Wright.
Just, just one clarification, and it says repair and remodel MSE building. It's really the science math building, the SM building. That's the official name.
Yes, you're correct, we'll make that change.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have six trustees voting yes, one no, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Next we have 6.15, Approved Final Project Plan, Submittals to the state chancellor's office for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I need a motion, I got it. Trustee Jamal, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. 6.16, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study. A motion from trustee Wright. And a second from trustee Lang, request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yeah, I was having, maybe it was a late-night moment, having trouble understanding the second paragraph and seeing how of all the language there is necessary. What we're saying is, is any absence of more than 30 days requires board of trustees' approval. And I notice that you have, if any, if an absence of more than 30 days without pay is requested, or an absence of more than 30 days without pay is requested with benefits, now what of the situation if it's more than 30 days without benefits? So why can't we just say any absence of more than 30 days requires board approval?
We can do that.
Wouldn't that cover everything?
Yeah, if that's the board's preference.
Well, it's inclusive of all the scenarios.
Absolutely.
It's broader.
We called out the with benefits, just to make sure that folks know that that did go separately to the board, for board approval, but it doesn't matter.
That works.
Wouldn't it cover, any absence of more than 30 days requires board approval?
You're sure right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So you're on the board policy page. So the, the second paragraph would read, if any, if an absence, or we can say in any absence, but if an absence of more than 30 days is requested, the board of trustees' approval is required.
We need to say without pay, 'cause that's what this is about, yeah.
Oh, sorry, so without pay.
We'll make that change for
Boy, I want, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it is.
It's review and study, yeah.
Got it.
So, actually, now looking at it, knowing that it's the without-pay policy, leaving it in saying, "Without pay with benefits", you're trying to get rid of what appears to be a redundancy, because it doesn't mention without pay without benefits. So you're just saying all in one thing, okay.
That's why, that, I saw that it didn't say without benefit, so.
Might as well, either add that or just eliminate, got it. Are we good? All right. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Now at 6.17, which is a recess to public hearing. So at this point, before we have that public hearing, vice chancellor David Begay would like to provide an introduction.
The board will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the district initial proposal to CSEA. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process, I'll be here to assist.
Okay, so does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing no requests to speak. Board item 6.17, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Yes.
If it's a public hearing,
Mm-hmm.
Is this not subject to the public, any person from the public, if I want to speak?
Correct, that's what the next thing on my text says. It is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Do I have anybody wishing to make public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, and let's see. and let's see, public hearing is now closed, is there any further discussion on this matter by the board? Seeing none, item six point one seven is concluded, I will entertain a motion for its passage. I have a motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no further request to speak, go ahead and vote on the item. Okay, we had a pub, we, we had a public hearing on the item and now we're voting on the item. We're voting to approve the initial proposal to C S E A.
It's not a.
Oh, we don't vote it?
This is a public hearing, so I don't think there's a need for vote.
So it was just, okay, so we don't need to vote on it.
No, it's an action item because you have to conduct a public hearing, but we open and close the public hearing, but there's no need for vote because it's just a public hearing.
Okay.
Soliciting comments from the public.
Sometimes we vote on whatever it was we discussed in the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
But not this time.
No, sir.
Okay. Six point one eight, Academic Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Lang. Request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Yeah, I had a, it's a thought I'd mentioned in public, I had the discussion with the, the Vice Chancellor Begay and Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons about the stipend issue, which I, I think it would be helpful, I know you're going to discuss it with the chancellor, it'd be helpful for, for us to know the total amount of stipends that we're offering just so we see an aggregate amount because it's not insubstantial.
Yes, sir.
The stipends are provided to faculty for, beyond their regular salaries for additional duties. Is that the way to describe it?
That, very well said.
Thank you.
Are you looking for an aggregate for each individual that may gain them?
For a total, I, I saw that there were a substantial amount of stipends that were provided and it didn't have a total amount and I think I have gotten the total amount, I appreciate that, but I think board members would want to see that.
And in addition to a running amount over the course of the fiscal year?
That'd be even better.
Possibly.
We could do that, yes.
Okay. Alright, still need a motion, oh, we got the motion, need to go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Six point one nine, Classified Personnel Actions.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no request to speak, we'll go and vote on the item. Student advisor. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. Six point two zero, Sabbatical Revision and Rescind. Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no request to speak. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. That, we're now to seven point zero, Reports. We have a list of board requested reports. No more information on that, seven point two, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Annual Accreditation Reports. Any more information on that? Seven point three, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers.
Oh, I hit, sorry.
Going back to seven point.
Seven point two?
Two.
Sorry, I apologize. Unless I missed it, I didn't see the job placement data in the Saddleback College report where it was in the I V C report. Is there a reason for that or did I just miss the data that was supposed to be in there? So in the, in the accreditation reports, I saw that there was job placement data in the I V C report, but not in the Saddleback College report. And the reason for that?
You'll recall that we were behind I V C in getting on board with the R P Group's Completor and Lever Survey. We've just administered our first survey, so we don't have the report back with data, so we'll have that in our next year's report.
So is the, is it okay that the data is omitted in this, in this report?
We've got what we need in terms of the required information on licensure and we, the other data is not available. The data aren't available at all colleges across the state or across the region, it's not a uniform activity because it's, right now it's something that we have to pay in contract for.
Okay, so I V C is doing the same thing, they're just a little bit ahead, is that, okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, now back to seven point four, Basic Aid Report.
No changes since last month.
Okay, seven point five, Facilities Plan Status Report. Seven point six, Monthly Financial Status Report. Seven point seven, O P E B Trust Fund.
Just to remind board, there's two months here in this item.
Okay, did you, did you say something back on?
Did you skip seven point three or was that just?
I did it and then was told to go back, so. But I did, I did go seven point three and then seven point four and went back to seven point two. Is there something you needed to point out on seven point three? Okay. So now we're to eight point oh, Reports from Administration, starting with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Porter, it's an honor to be here tonight. Since brevity is the soul of wit, I'll keep this short, I wrote it on a really small piece of paper. Summer semester is in session for the eight-week session, we're in our second week already, I can't believe it. Faculty and students are very hard at work, the Academic Senate is preparing for the fall semester and I look forward to a positive resolution of the faculty contract, thank you.
Thank you very much, next we have Faculty Association.
And no report tonight, thank you.
Alright, next we have I V C Academic Senate.
Good evening, I echo my colleagues', my first colleague's remark, since I obviously am going to give a report, I don't echo my second colleague's report, not report. Summer school has started, faculty members are, many of them are back in the classroom or teaching somewhere, others are pursuing other interests, projects for the college, the district, or their own personal or professional needs, as we, as we always use summer. But I also want to remark that we heard from the student governments at both colleges tonight and I can speak to the A S I V C folks. I want to commend the A S I V C students during the last year and the work so far by this year's leadership. They're, they've been working tremendously diligently and successfully. I think we've seen more student participation in participatory governance and other college, college activities this past year than I remember ever seeing before and it's just been a wonderful boon to the college to have them participating at the level that they've been participating and I see every reason to have that continue from the leadership that I've met so far. And as I mentioned earlier, they've, they've continued and improved their methodology for how they allocate the funds that they have available to them to allocate, they're doing really a fabulous job, they really are participating and they're learning a huge amount by the processes they go through, they're including as many students as they possibly can in the different processes and it really is a huge and beneficial to the college and to the students' experience for them, so I just want to take this opportunity to commend them since they've been highlighted quite a bit tonight.
We have. Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development, who's not here, Associate Vice Chancellor, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Okay, Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
Traditionally, we've gone through and had a faculty hiring season from January to May with a couple items coming to the board in June. This year, you'll notice on tonight's board agenda, we had seven faculty members, July we anticipate four additional ones and then we have four additional faculty members we actually currently plan to bring into the August board meetings, so really hiring faculty has become a year-round process for H R, which is unique and different and this seems to be getting more approach with the state budget issues, so that's just one of those things they'd point out. So we're doing a lot of training on workday on a personal basis and H R is making a huge impact because it's a real-time process rather than a paper time which, which actually has a delay process of three to five weeks sometimes, so, so those are some of the things happening in human resources right now, thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice Chancellor Business Services.
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if you noticed how big the board docket book was this month. This represents a lot of business transactions or going through a lot of reading that you had to do on your iPads. Again, we had over fifty, fifty-some items this month, which is more than double what we normally have out of Business Services. It was incredible amount of work in the very short period of time between the board meetings to pull that together. So, uh, you know, with the couple errors on the one contract and missed typed thing on a resolution, I just want to say thank you to Executive Directors Brandy Delena, her Minister of Assistant Jennifer Bukowski, as well as Kim Acord, Executive Director of Fiscal Services, and her assistant Myra Arias, and then of course my assistant Sandy Sembiaza. It takes an incredible amount of work to pull this together and get it over to our board office, Grace and Joyce, to make sure everything gets to you all on a monthly basis and everything is accurate, it's a tremendous amount of work this month. All those basic aid projects that we approve, that represents a lot of paperwork, procurement, legal work, all kinds of things and there's a lot of accuracy associated with all that, so I want to thank them again, they did a tremendous job this month.
Great, thank you, Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vincent Cooper, President of the I V C Classified Senate. These past two years have gone by fast, my term is up in a few days and I would like to introduce you to Karen Martin, who will be taking my place starting July first as President of the I V C Classified Senate and I'm looking forward to her presidency. Thank you, thank you.
Or looking forward to your non-presidency.
The glass is half-full kind of thing. One of the things I'm looking forward to this fall is I've been asked to be the advisor for the film club at I V C, so I enjoy working with the students, it'll be a lot of fun, I'm looking forward to later this week to the district retreat and hopefully looking forward to coming up with some brainstorming and wishing everyone a safe Fourth of July, thank you.
Very good, thank you, next we have C S E A.
Thank you, Mr. President, Scott Ferguson-Green, President of C S E A, Chapter Five Eighty-Six. First of all, I want to extend my compliments to both the Saddleback President Classified Senate and also the I V C Classified Senate President because the last two years working with them has, has been very enjoyable. We got along very well, they're both C S E A members and so there were a lot of, of things that we came together on to try to work together and, and work for the benefit of the entire membership, so I hate to see both of them go because not only are my, they're my coworkers, they're also my friends, so it's, it's going to be sad, but I, I look forward to the new presidencies of both Classified Senators, so that'll be a, a new era and hopefully I'll still be president, so I can still work with them. The other thing I wanted to mention is the fact that we do have the annual C S E A Conference coming up and all five delegates coming from this district, from both I V C and Saddleback College, are executive board members, so we have the entire, practically the entire leadership that are going to be at conference representing all our members throughout the entire district and I think that's the first time that's happened in quite a while. But one of the things we're going to be doing is, we're going to be discussing resolutions on supporting legislation that's further going to enhance education and next month, after I, I review later this week with the rest of the membership of those resolutions, I'm going to share that with the board in the July board meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mike Soder, Saddleback College Classified Center President. Thanks Scott for those kind words, that was really, it was nice to hear, thank you, it's been great working with you. As Scott mentioned, this is my last official board meeting, thank you. It's been two years and it's been a great experience personally and professionally and so just to make it brief, just wanted to say thank you to you all and thank you to the classified staff at Saddleback College for giving me the privilege of serving them as president, thanks.
Thank you very much. So tonight we adjourn our meeting in memory of Dr. Hans Vogel, who recently passed away at the age of ninety-three. Dr. Vogel was the first president of our very first board. He led the launch, the effort to launch Saddleback College in nineteen sixty-seven and hosted then-Governor Ronald Reagan for the high-profile college dedication. Dr. Vogel served as board president four times in his eight-year tenure. Almost fifty years later, his legacy lives on for more than forty thousand students who attend college in our district each semester. His vision for this college district and contributions to our community will never be forgotten. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, colleagues, and friends, thank you, have a good night.